May seventh, two thousand and nineteen, Select Board Meeting. This meeting is being recorded.
Hello folks. I'm sure Doug Mogulyn tonight, and I'm sure he's listening somewhere. First up is public comment. Should anyone have a, something they'd like to discuss with us? We can surely listen. Just say your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Ron Ludark. I think I sent you, I think-
There's a packet here, yep.
A packet, and my last meeting with something like this was thirty-seven years ago, when I thought it was all settled and everything else. And, uh, big controversy, but one thing that my lawyer did have at that time, and I'm glad he did, and I know somewhere, sitting in a box, you've got all this information. And I know that unfortunately, all these people that I had died, my lawyer died, and I caught, got in touch with our daughter, Lucas' daughter, his name was John Ockner, he's out of Monson. And I got in touch with his daughter and asked where all the stuff went, and she says, well, it went through the state because he didn't belong to anybody. I guess that's what happens when you die, all that stuff goes. So I contacted them three times, and they said they couldn't find anything, so we got it. Well, when I came back is that I never thought I was questioned on it. Uh, we left it at, uh, when we had the meeting back then, I remember there was, there was three people from the town, plus the highway foreman, Minio was there, and his secretary, matter of fact, was keeping notes. And, uh, we had three, four residents that lived on the lake for all these years, for many, many years. One of them actually, also, I can't think of his last name, actually worked at the ice house that was in front of my house. And, and they, and they kind of like gave a history of what they thought. The whole object is that, that where the turnaround is in front of my house, Congamont Heights claimed that they owned that many years ago. But recently, because we went to land court and everywhere else, that they never owned past property, uh, fifteen. And, uh, so my neighbor, I don't know why, got upset, and he, he came to the Conservation Board and Lake Management, and said, he doesn't own this property and everything else, and I can't believe he did that because he was there at the meeting. That was, you know, that we had, never did anybody, he doesn't even own a house, I mean, he owns a house here, doesn't even live there. So I don't know what happened. So finally, I know, I, I know Dennis and, and all the rest of them. I went to them, and he says, well, geez, you know, and they tried to look for the records, and they couldn't find them. So, there I am, thirty-seven years later, coming back and doing the same thing I did before. Uh, Congamont Heights, my, when my first meeting with them, they said that they did not own it, and that they were going to investigate it. Then my old man, Norton Delio, and Mr. Wilson, uh, they went and they investigated. I guess it used to be Congamont Inc., years ago Incorporated, and they went for a guy in Suffield, who, who had all this information, and there was a little, uh, synopsis about it in there. And, and he said, definitely, we do not own that, and he gave him, he gave, gave them the map. He gave him a letter that was written in nineteen forty-eight, giving Congamont Heights and, and the town permission to extend the road past this property, as long as they would take, you know, take care of everything. And he showed, and he gave me a map, a, a map that was originally made in nineteen thirty-nine, that actually showed that property that I own, going right down to the water. And he, and it was shown, but as he said in the letter, and I talked to many people, that map has been changed. It wasn't until nineteen fifty, until, till people started questioning that map. And that's, that's in the Book of Deeds in Springfield, which I went to and I researched it again. So anyways, the problem is, I've used it all this year, and nobody's ever complained about it. One guy complains, and I says, well, so I talked to, uh, Wilson is his name, I think, the Lake Management, Dick.
Reynolds.
Yeah, Reynolds. And he said, well, come and talk to you guys and see what, see what you can do for me, since I've been here that long. I mean, I've kept it up, I kept it clean, I kept the seawall going. We had an oil truck go off a couple, a couple of years ago. I went to the town, said, can you help me out? And they says, no, we don't own that property. Went to Congamont Heights, no, we don't own that property. Well, so I did, I built it. And then I had a boat waiting to roll over there, because it's just a big drop. And, uh, so, again, no re, no reason, uh, no response, nobody wanted to do it. And up until two years ago, the turnaround at the end of the street, uh, the town never, never even plowed it, never. And when I was there, Mr. Nice was his name, and I asked him why, he says, well, he says, we don't, we don't own that property. So, so I would, I've been doing it for the past, you know, twenty-eight years or so. You know, just to go in and out and get it cleaned up, so people could turn around, instead of turning around in your driveway. And, uh, well, that's a short story. Like I said in my, in my report there, that we were in that, Minio's office in the old place, climbing those ten thousand stairs, and plus the, no air conditioning and everything, for four hours going over. So anyways, that's, that's the whole deal.
Right.
You know, and, uh, as I said, I, I'm retired, I'm a school, school teacher for thirty-five years, and I coached. And I'm back to coaching, wrestling at American International College, but it's only a six-month job, and that's it. So, and I don't have the finances to hire another lawyer again, and everything, go through all this whole deal. So I'm just coming and asking for your mercy to help me out here.
All right, thank you. We'll look into it. Anybody else for public comment? All right, we're off and running. So one A is this.
Yes.
Yep.
And it's not a big parcel either, it's only about fourteen feet wide by fifty feet long, it's injected in and out, so.
Now, Dick is looking at another issue on our behalf on that fifty-eight Berkshire Road Joe, on that other paper road, so, and he's supposed to be seeing the same issues with the Congamont Heights, and their dissolution and potential transfer of properties to the town. But the question is whether or not that ever got properly finished and disposed of and signed off. So he's still looking into that.
Okay. All right, well, I guess we'll start looking into this too then.
So Ron, you went to the Conservation Commission. Did you go to the Lake Management?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of the letter that they gave you?
Who?
If I'm reading this right, uh, went to Conservation Commission, Lake Manage, I received a letter.
Yes, it's in there, it was, it's stand written, it's from, uh, that time, his name was Bedford, it was over on.
He Bedford.
No, yeah, it's Brodurg, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, Russ is talking about, did you get a letter recently from the town that said you couldn't use the-
Yes, I did.
Where's that letter?
It was, oh.
That letter's not here.
And I know, I didn't, I forgot to bring it.
All right, could you just make, drop that off to us?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's been gone a while.
Yeah.
The old goat.
Yeah.
Forty.
All right, so Pabel's warrant, one nine two five dated five six nineteen, and the amount of a hundred ninety-seven thousand nine hundred fifty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. And then I need a motion for regular session minutes, four thirty nineteen.
Sold.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we have executive. For four thirty nineteen. Need a motion.
Sold.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
There you go. Okay, sick leave bank.
It's there, here's the motion.
Yep. And that's by the current policy here in front of us?
Yeah, that's by the current one, and then the future, you know, you and I talked about some other changes to it. But that'll be something you can do at future meetings.
Right.
As policy changes.
All right, so motion to authorize sick leave bank transfer to Cindy Pendleton of eighty-five hours through May twenty-third, twenty nineteen.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we need to sign it?
Sure.
There you go. All right. So this is approved state DLS contract agreement for North Palm Project.
Yes, the DCS contract, and it's, uh, because in discussions with them, instead of us having to go out and do short-term borrowings.
Yeah.
To do, um, all the pieces of the financial closing pie here.
Okay.
The state, they've worked out an issue with the trust, the Conservation Commission, where the money could just be, um, given straight to that other state agency that will help pay for the conservation restriction and all the other expenses. So this is going to save us from having to do short-term borrowing.
Okay.
So it needs to be authorized and, um, signed off by the, uh, the chair. And the state is okay with it, they've given a letter, I even have a letter if I'm okay.
I'll make that motion and authorize the chair to sign.
I guess I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So I'm just signing where the yellow is?
Mm-hmm, yep, there'll be two pages, there's two versions of it, because they want two originals. And believe it or not, we're the contractor, we're not actually-
Right.
Because the contractor signs everything that's there.
And this is over the-
See where it is?
Yeah.
He signs here, the same.
Yeah, you know, up here, right?
Yep.
But I was going by where the yellow marker was. And this is over the four hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's precisely what it was.
Yep, yeah, I see that. Okay.
So then our other contributions will be the, uh, the short-term borrowing proceeds for the one point two million authorized at town meeting, and then the two appropriations of the five hundred thousand from the CPC.
Right.
Uh, as well as the water commission.
And that means that-
And Ben will be telling us, after he works out with the trust, who we're making out the checks to.
Yeah.
For the closing.
Okay.
All right?
Yep. Award surplus equipment. This was a good time. We seemed to get some decent money.
I had a good number of bidders come in. Here's the spreadsheet here, and obviously, unlike a, uh, something where we're procuring and paying for, under these circumstances, we're actually want the highest bid because we're selling surplus stuff.
Right.
So there's a series of votes that have to, uh, be taken with regard to this.
Doing individually?
No, no, there's a, there's a, the votes are there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make that motion that we approve the highest bid.
There's the votes.
Oh. Where?
Oh, actually, okay. Motion to award each surplus bid category for vehicles to the highest bidder indicated on May first, two thousand and nineteen bid result sheet.
Okay, make, so I'll second that. Why, you said motion to award, so you made that in the form of a motion?
Yep.
I seconded the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then our motion to authorize the chief administrative officer to execute any and all titles and bills of sale to complete the bid awards.
All right, second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sold. We did good.
We did good.
We did real good, actually.
You know, normally, a lot of it goes for scrap, but some people are interested in that, so that's good.
Then it's going to go to scrap, but they're just going to pay a lot of money to get it there. All right, Springfield Water and Sewer Contract Amendment. Randy, what's this about?
Uh, we have an agreement with Springfield Water and Sewer to provide a secondary water source for the town. Um, that contract expires in June, so this is something we do every five or ten years. So this is just the next contract, it's a five-year contract.
Right.
I've read, read through the language, we've passed it through legal council, so pretty couple of the water pressures were here and signed it last week.
Okay.
So, it's a blessing.
So I need a motion.
Sold.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Did it go up quite a bit?
No, the rates, I mean, the rates aren't built in the contract, we're, we're considered wholesale, uh, community, so the rates are based on their actual operating cost, so.
Right.
As long as you build our million-dollar plants, they're happy.
It's, it's sort of similar to the way the sewer works with Westfield, now you don't get to negotiate.
No.
An I and A.
No.
Your customized rate for your community.
How may I help you?
You're just a customer.
Yes, thank you, may I have another?
Yeah.
Mr. Dee Dee, there's two of them.
I know, I know.
I'd also like to put Mr. Mogulyn in charge of making sure that we always sign properly.
Is that in the form of a motion?
I'll make that in form of a motion.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You missed two meetings.
Doug, we really appreciate you stepping up to the plate.
This is what happens.
You know, when I was looking at the parking lot, I, I think someone needs to re-inspect the crevices, and the actual parking lines don't seem to be right. So I'd like to make a motion that Doug Mogulyn be also in charge of, just, can he measure each white space? I, I think they're off a little bit.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, continue on.
Again, you don't miss two meetings.
Yeah, don't miss two meetings, yeah. That doesn't end well. And he wants to be vice chairman, I don't know about that. Okay, American Legion, I have next. Parade invite for, uh, five twenty-seven nineteen, ten AM. That's all I'm seeing here, so at seven AM, we'll stick it out of order.
Okay.
All right.
Chapter ninety, request for-
Yeah, well-
You know, he's coming back to that.
I'm going back to that. That's Congamont Road, right? I'm not, I'm not signing nothing for Congamont Road. That place is a mess. Okay, so it's, um, American Legion across from the Summer House, ten AM, need to be there for nine thirty. And is this the one that goes all the way down?
Just going to the church.
Just to the church, okay.
Then they drive down to the-
Then we drive down to the cemetery, okay.
And it's going to be Monday the twenty-seventh.
Monday the twenty-seventh. American Legion afterwards, you're all invited. Okay.
Ron, just make a note on that one to make sure that they hold their permit from Mast D O T.
We did, we signed that, uh-
Was that for that one, or was that for a different one?
I believe it was for this one.
Had to have been, because I can't think the other guys would be-
I want to make sure they're, they're good, that they're getting what they need from Mast D O T.
Okay. So I don't even have, oh, Congamont Road Construction Oversight. Gee. What could possibly they need to oversight there? Everything's wonderful. Requesting additional twelve thousand. I'm approving the request, yeah.
Are they going to be able to, to watch Mast D O T in the contract or two, Randy? Would this help with that even?
I mean, that, that's on D O T, that's day-to-day construction. You know, this contract is, you know, they're, they're working for the town, you know, this, this contract. Dealing with questions that come up during construction, I mean, during the, the, the early stages, they were reviewing contract, you know, reviewing contract, getting shop drawings. So they got into that, that budget, you know, there's been delays in the project that, you know, extended. So they're asking for a little more money to just get, get us to the end of the job. So.
So do they have any pull? I, I mean, we've, I've never thought of it, only them guys.
No more than-
No more than, we have nothing, so they're right with us?
Yeah.
All right, they just want to document everything they're not doing right, or not, shouldn't they not doing right? Everything they're doing to just aggravate the town of Southwick. Right. Yeah.
Thanks for monitoring construction, you know, that, you know, D O T, they want to shift responsibility to the town. Our, our consultants to answer a question regarding, you know, something on the plan that they, they need to look right, or this question on, you know, that's when our consultant steps in and answers the question.
Gotcha.
You know, they're not, they're not there to oversee the day-to-day.
Right, see how many cars can float, instead of being driven, that's not their department. Right, right, the new loading and unloading zone for boats, that's not their problem either. I understand.
I, I got, I have to ask this. I mean, their budget was almost thirty thousand dollars, and they're looking for twelve thousand dollars more. Now, usually, in most projects that Time Bomb puts in front of it, they always have this ten percent contingency fee. Well, ten percent of thirty thousand is three thousand dollars. This is twelve thousand dollars. Is there any wiggle room here?
Well, they don't spend it all, we get it back.
So the way, the way it works is they spend is based on hourly costs, so if they, they work an hour, they, they bill an hour.
Yeah.
So they had a budget of twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And they spent just about all of that at this point. And we're trying to project, you know, for where we are today.
Yeah.
To the end of the job, which will be probably in the fall.
Yeah.
Right, so they're, they're projecting there's going to be some costs associated with, you know, between now and, you know, any delay.
How come we got so far off? I know there's been some issues, but isn't this off quite a bit?
I don't, for, I don't think off, I mean-
Considering the headache that's down there, it's probably not off quite a bit at all.
Right, right, I mean-
There's been a lot of, there's been a lot of delays and issues, obviously.
Right, which they've been involved with.
And with, you know, you know, to try to help resolve those. I mean, so that, that's, that's, that's time that probably wasn't expected.
Sure.
Right, when they, when they budget the project.
No, I mean, we've, we've got a great relationship with Time Bomb, and they've done a lot of good work for us.
I agree.
You know, I, I just, I'm just looking at this saying, you know, we usually figure that ten percent, and it's about more than ten percent.
And we had to go with the lowest bidder, right? That's what the state says?
Well, I, I mean-
Or did the state technically pick them?
It's the lowest representative responsible there, so.
Right.
That's the, the term.
Which is a litmus test, which, which they won't ever meet for us in the future, if they bid on one of our projects.
Right, so really, the state picked them for this project, not us, or did we?
No.
Did I sit here and pick them? I didn't sit here and pick them, okay.
Oh, the state, it was the state, the state managed the bid.
No, no, I'm fine with that, I just-
Time Bomb designed it, the state, we had the hearing.
I'm just thinking ten years down the road, which one of us has to call up each other and say, hey, Ash, you better get to that meeting, because them same schmucks are coming in front of them again. You know, we're just a bitter old men, but we can still have complaint, right, Ron?
Right.
Right. You know what I mean?
I go through that, it's terrible.
Fine, I need a motion approved.
Sold.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
I think it's on the last page, Russ.
Yep.
All right, I'm signing anyways. Oh, of course, yeah.
And there'll be some chapter ninety forms-
Randy sign in, and the town accountant sign.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, just leave, you got to sign, just date it.
What did we say, more chapters?
Oh, there'll be some chapter ninety forms that I'll coordinate with you.
Oh.
And Cora, and Carl, so.
Wonderful.
Yeah, it's the coordinated part.
Yeah, understood. Okay, so next is Rotary Upcoming Events. And since, Mr. Fox, you were babbling on at a meeting apparently, and-
I was just trying to be-
Now it's time to pay the piper.
Trying to be nice.
Yes, oh, I understand, absolutely. So what are you thinking?
I think we-
Mr. Nice.
I would make a motion that we give them the same donation that we did last year.
All right, I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carl, you can look it up.
I think we should make a motion that Mr. Mogulyn, uh, attend each one of these and give a detailed report back to the board.
I will, uh, second that motion gladly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Can you make sure to discuss to Mr. Mogulyn's, uh, chair mail next week? That's the schedule for him, or even just put it in his, his, uh, his drawer in his desk, that'll work just fine. We wouldn't want him to miss the first one. All right, so Rotary's done. Okay. That's it, I see old business next. Just the, I, in my file is the community host agreements, which we're still waiting on.
Yeah, um, you know, Doug still had a question about the financial assumptions that they were supposed to submit, and I had asked Ben where that stood from, uh, the attorney, who was the same attorney as the other location.
Yes.
So, and we have not got that information back about the, the financial aspect, although they did hold their community outreach meeting, and both chiefs are fine.
Oh, I didn't even know. I bent too. Looked glad they had that meeting.
So, I suppose you could just roll it over for another week?
Yep, I already did.
Or if we get that financial stuff in, the board could authorize, if, if it's okay with council and Doug, then the board could okay, uh, the chairman to sign it.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Because really, you-
Any luck I won't be chairman by the time they're done, so that'll work out just fine.
Yeah. I, I sense in a lot of our conversations, you're looking forward to becoming the clerk.
Well, maybe vice chairman, if, if the, if the future vice chairman can't make meetings, then no sense in having that spot vacant, right? Probably do both anyways, but whatever. Okay, so elections, it says, are five fourteen nineteen.
Just a reminder, next week.
Yep.
No meeting.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, wow.
And hopefully, the local news media is going to do a front-page article on that.
I doubt it, judging by the-
I did one a few weeks ago on what, um, contested elections there were.
Well, those papers should have sold by now, so you could probably do another one. Maybe not, but-
We'll think about, I'll think about some.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
We have new registry, we have new machines, so maybe you could do a thing about the new machines and how they work.
They did the demos tonight, yeah.
You know?
Right?
Yeah, no hanging chads or nothing, so. They look, they look nice. They spent enough money on them. All right, and then town meeting is five twenty-one nineteen?
Yeah, that's two weeks from today, and there'll be a consent agenda.
Okay.
Before it.
So let's, let's discuss the town meeting. If we have a great turnout like we did at their, our special, when do we start the meeting? Do we start the meeting on time, or do we wait till everyone's seated?
Well, the-
Because I hear it both ways.
The housekeeping special, the, the moderator will start the six-thirty housekeeping special.
Okay, regardless.
He does that.
Okay.
Because that's year on housekeeping issues.
Okay. So then maybe the paper can write, come, come early.
I don't-
Please.
I don't really anticipate that thing.
I just, we were an hour late last time, and-
Yeah.
You know, I heard it from both sides, so, no big deal. Ooh, yeah, stormwater permit, nepotus.
Yep, Randy had received an email.
So you got a rejection letter, Randy, I heard, huh?
Well, I don't, that's not really what it was. They just wanted to have, uh-
That's-
A little bit more information on the deadline, so the board needs to designate one of its members to meet with, uh, with the EPA, and myself, and the finance committee liaison, and whoever else they would like to have there, the DEP counterpart, and the legislative people.
Well, that's an interesting one. We got to pick one, well, apparently, it's not Doug, so, he's not here, so, or we could put Doug on. But you seem to cry the best, Russ. I'm going to tell him to go screw. So what do you, you want it?
Yeah, I, I would like to ask Senator Warren's office to attend, Representative Neal's office.
Well, then no one's going to be there, they're not showing up.
Senator Muggles.
They're not going to show up.
Well, I, no, the last time-
I'll, I will bet you a dollar, under fifty, I can bet, right? Fifty's that difficult?
Betting is all about the thing.
I would bet you a dollar, none of those three are going to show up.
Well, the last time we reached out to Senator Warren, her office responded that same day.
Oh, yeah, with a letter. You're not going to get anyone there. You're not. Okay, good luck with that.
So just to be clear.
Yeah, be clear.
Randy's going to be, you know, responding through, with an email or a letter, extending an invitation for them to come out and meet with us and our state partner to determine what, what their concerns are at a meeting.
Well, and honestly, it's a good, healthy meeting to get everything out in the open, because we torture Randy left and right with, wow, we don't really need to do this, and, you know, we were told ten years ago to sweep the streets. So it'd be nice and healthy.
Forty years ago.
Whatever.
Forty years.
Dog years, it's ten.
We've been sweeping the streets for a year.
No, understood, but at least you can have a healthy conversation with the person.
Mixed signals.
Yeah, whatever, right. Men's room, women's room, the middle room, it doesn't matter. You call it mixed signals all you want, but at least-
That's not what Matty and his-
I know that, but, well, who knows? But at least, you can get your pound of flesh out of whatever poor person shows up for this meeting to make yourself feel better. And then we'll write the checks, like we've been doing, or not, or started to do.
So the record should reflect that.
The record, oh, the record.
Mr. Fox, instead of Mr. Mogulyn, we'll, we'll deal with this issue.
Right. Mr. Fox will report to Mr. Mogulyn, and Mr. Mogulyn will type it up. Okay, that problem solved.
So that'll be marked, I have the email, the, the EPA.
Absolutely.
So we'll work on language.
Yeah, but I would love for them to come out, just so we can, you know, so somebody can hear it.
CCs in it.
Yeah. Sure, we got a Western Mass reunion, because I'm sure there's other little towns that are having the same headaches, literally.
You're still at the regional meetings, Randy, still in that suit? No, 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 I mean, we get, put in money so you could belong to-
Connect the rivers from where you're heading today.
Right.
What of that ongoing litigation against the, the group litigation? Wanted that ongoing litigation against the, the group litigation.
I heard nothing on that in probably a year.
Right.
Yeah.
But I mean, other communities are having financial problems and concerns.
They got it.
Some of the smaller communities. I'd see if you could get an update from them, Randy, from that group.
I mean, we must be just on that threshold of being that smaller community versus.
So I just like, I, I went through the other day, I did lots of size and I, all great community that's in the permit.
Right.
Right, detected what the population is, right? And we're not the smallest, I mean, there, there are, I can't, I mean, we're probably two-thirds away down the list. But there are a lot of communities that are between six and ten thousand population.
Okay, that are on that list also. Cool, cause I, I wondered that, what that, what the cutoff was, and we talked about filling the cemetery and maybe we could play with the numbers a little bit, but but apparently thousands isn't gonna work out my way. Okay.
Make a straight line across Connecticut.
Right, well, you know, that, that option, you know, take care of our, our boating issue, right, and our permitting issue, we'll give them, we'll give them back the water. Nothing personal, Ron, you can still visit, but, you know.
Which is fine, because half the time Russ wanted to annex them.
Right, we're just gonna give them back.
Well, it's gone back and forth.
When I first moved here, it's no, no joke, back many years ago, the, their coast guard used to come out.
Yep, right.
You should've seen the size of that boat. I mean, it had to be at least forty foot. And I mean, all horns and whistles, everybody sit there and just laugh, like, where are you gonna go? Just like, couldn't make it under their side of the bridge.
Right.
Can't go through the culverts, you can only go in the middle one.
I mean, they, they go out there all two hours and we all sit there and laugh and then they load it up and take off again.
They, they did it.
Through the Connecticut River.
You didn't see it till the next year. Now it's stopped, nobody comes out anymore.
Oh, that was Charlie Wolfe, good Navy guy.
Yep.
We got him out.
EPOs do come.
Okay, that's all I see under old business, and is there anything else that I'm missing?
Um, old business, the only thing I had is, uh, we're gonna be having some sort of get-together next Monday morning with, uh, the environmental firm doing the twenty-one E.
Yep.
On, uh, the North Pond property.
Yep.
And I've just been going back and forth, rereading some of these, uh, emails and, and, uh, things like that and it, 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 just for clarification, just so that you know.
Well, I, I am somewhat confused, because me and you and Doug and Carl and everyone in this room knew what a twenty-one E is and knew what we expected of a twenty-one E.
Right.
And then I don't know what happened when it went upstairs.
Well, we, it was discussed at the meeting.
Yeah.
With every single party there.
Yeah.
And, and then when we, you know, I, someone said, well, the twenty-one E's done, and I said, I didn't hear anything about that, and Carl got a, you know, sent out a email. Next thing you know, we get a copy of it and you read over the first eighteen pages, which are the most important pages.
Right.
And there was nothing addressed about the fact that there was a business there.
They did a flyover. Right.
And, and that same night, I talked to the, uh, president of that, uh, that, uh, company.
Right.
And I know we had a bad cellphone connection. We kept breaking up.
Right.
But at that night, I gave him the name of the individual who had worked there and said he could identify areas where.
Right.
If they were still there.
There's actually a few, I believe, that, that are still alive that weren't there.
And then next morning, Carl sent him the name and address and everything, you know, so, and, and, I mean, now that's, as of tomorrow, that's gonna be two weeks.
Correct.
Since we spoke to him, but we had the original meeting two days after the special town meeting in, in March.
Did.
So, you know, we were shooting for closing the end of May, but I, I mean, it's like, I, I don't know what's going on, it's like people are dragging their feet or something, you know, because this is and, and then people said, well, they didn't know anything about this or didn't, couldn't find anybody with any knowledge of this. Since, since that discussion, I went out and I found two, two additional people.
Yeah.
That, uh, t- t- told me about their experience, uh, buying fuel there.
Right.
You know, so I'm not, and I'm not trying to point the blame at anybody, you know, because blaming people isn't.
Right, it's not gonna resolve the issue.
But I, I just want this board to know that, uh, we have from the beginning done our due diligence.
Yeah.
And I don't know whether, I, I have no intentions of dropping the ball on this, uh, not with a, over three million dollars.
I'm not signing, I'm not signing anything until the twenty-one E is done.
Right.
Period. We've just said that and saying it again, and I'm sure they'll do it right. I, I, it's, I don't know if vacations or what the mental illness someone may or may not have, but this is easy.
Right.
And I'm sure there's nothing wrong with the facility, just do it the right way, be done with it.
I hope that they don't find a thing.
I don't think they will, but it's just from day one, we said they had to do this. Everyone on both sides of the, the coin knew and they had no issues.
Right.
So maybe we hired the wrong firm.
I don't know.
Which I don't think is true, because it was recommended through our council.
Right. No, and he immediately.
We didn't hire them.
He.
Oh, even better.
The trusted.
The trusted.
But he immediately pulled his initial report.
Well, then he should take us to lunch, if the trust is paying for it.
Anyways, I just wanted to bring that up because.
Hopefully you have better news next week.
Monday, we'll, we'll meet and.
You are meeting for sure Monday?
Uh, that's what I'm told.
Oh, that's great.
That's what I'm told.
Good. Anything else under old business?
Nope.
Nope. Uh, new business?
I have one thing.
How do you find this stuff? I, I, I don't know, I don't have time to set term.
Well, I.
You just come up with stuff, maybe because you sell flowers, I don't know what it is.
I had someone.
They just show up, I guess. Go ahead, someone should, come to see you, yeah?
Right, that, uh.
They didn't wanna buy an ice cream, so they went and saw you.
Right, but no, this happened to be a person I knew that, uh, was, uh, has a, a disability.
Yep.
And, uh, they're, they're back in the area and they were wondering about PVTA. Now, every couple of years, we review this.[1629.54]